All meeting order, please stand for the Pledge Allegiance. Takes me a little longer to stand today.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thanks for coming everybody, a nice rainy day. And I'm grimacing a little bit, I had got a new knee last week, so we're getting used to it yet. Little stiff today with the rainy day. Roll call please.
Sandy Kufa.
Oh, absolute excuse.
Chris Oregan.
Here.
Christie Hilton.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Cindy Valentine.
Here.
Joanne Sherkey.
Here.
Mark Bouchard.
Here.
Alright, we do have a quorum. First, we have actually two public hearings, I think we could probably do these at the same time. I'll just make the motion to open up Public Hearing Two for Special Assessment Aquatic Management Cleaning, Canal Cleaning for Anchor Bay Drive, Farnsworth Drive, and Phillips Drive. And also Public Hearing Number One for Special Assessment Aquatic Management Canal Cleaning for Bayview Shores, Dyke Road, and Phillips Drive.
At 7:02?
At 7:02. Support? Motion support, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, gonna open up the, actually, two public hearings for a couple different aquatic and canal, aquatic management and canal cleaning. Is there anybody here like to speak on, to any one of those two? Don't all rush up at once.
Should we wait a couple minutes in case somebody comes in?
Nah.
I don't think they will.
I don't think so either. Hey, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearings.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for the Special Assessment Aquatic Management Canal Cleaning for Anchor Bay Drive, Farnsworth Drive, Phillips Drive, and also the Aquatic Management and Canal Cleaning for Bayview Shores.
Well, hang on one second. Are you guys here for our public hearing on the canal cleanings? Okay.
Bayview Shores, Dyke Road, and Phillips Drive at 7:03.
Support. Okay, here you have motion and support to close the public hearings, all at 7:03, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Sorry about that, I just needed to know. Deer in the headlights. Okay, bill payable, entertain a motion.
Do we, do we need to address Public Hearing Number One? Or did we do that?
We just did them both. We did them both at the same time.
Oh, I see the other ones, yep.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to pay the bills of $21,189.51.
Support. Okay, motion support, any discussion, questions? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Christie Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Yes.
Joanne Sherkey.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next we have public comments, do we have any public comments? Want to come up?
Thank you. Allosis, or assist, not assistant superintendent, superintendent Algenack Schools, back in the spring, when the agreement between Clay Township and the schools for the resource officer, Dave Fajardo came into play. I was at that meeting and told you I'd come back in the fall and give you a little bit of an update of how that went last year and kind of some of the plans we have for this year. Probably the easiest way to say it, it was, it was a tremendous success last year and really excited about where we're heading in the future here. As you know, last year, we were kind of, first time we'd had a resource officer in quite some time, so kind of getting an idea of what that day should look like throughout the school day and where we could best use him was kind of a feeling out process, which was nice in the spring because we were able to establish where he would be in the school and what hours he would work and things like that. Mike Coach has been great to work with on that. We've sent Dave to several trainings, some that have to do with actual, that position of a resource officer, some to do with school age things and just trying to get Dave real well-equipped in that area. He knows how to do that part of the job anyway. It's nice because we had the resource piece, we knew what we wanted that to look like, but we also know that there's that education side, and that's where Dave excels. He teaches classes up at the college, but he's made himself very available for doing some of the things within the school. For this year, we have some things planned where he's going to be going down to the 26 Building, doing some workshops on vaping, social media, all those things that we're tending to have to deal with up at the 7th through 12 Building, and we're hoping that he gets those kids that information early on. Been speaking with Mike Coach about the possibility of Dave going and becoming trained in DARE again. If you remember, we used to do the DARE problem for, or DARE program for years at the schools, and Dave's excited about that. He just wants to teach, he wants to be an educator in the schools. The relationships that he's built with kids, we have already headed off so many problems just last year alone, where kids are willing to come and talk to Dave so we can get ahead of some things. They feel comfortable talking with him, they know where his office is, and I mean, that's really, in the grand scheme of things, that's what you're looking for in a resource officer. Yeah, it's nice to have somebody there with a badge that if, if something happens, we have a guy there, but at the same point, again, the education piece and talking to kids and getting ahead of problems is really what we're looking for, and we feel like we have that right now. So like I said, it's been nice this summer, even we had, Michigan State Police has offered the schools a grant, not necessarily us, but it's a competitive grant, and because Dave was there and working with the administration, we were able to get some of the pieces that we needed to have, that we could get that grant in place. A lot of districts weren't able to do that, but working with Dave and coming up with our emergency plan for the school, which was one of the criteria for that grant, we feel like we have a pretty good chance, we'll know in the end of October if we got that grant. But again, those are just some of the things that we've been able to do where otherwise we probably wouldn't. So overall, I thank the board again for the support that you've had, I think the partnership between the schools and the township, it's, it's a winner for all our kids involved, it's been a great benefit for us. You know, like I said, nothing but positives to say about it at this point.
Cool.
Anything, questions that you might have?
No, yeah, I have been at a couple of the football games that Dave's been at, and them kids just seem to gravitate to them, so it seems like things are going well.
And Cindy, like I said, that, that's really to us is, is a key piece of it, because if you have somebody in there that's not, you know, if you watch them in the hallways, he's interacting with kids, and that's important because otherwise, they're not going to go to him if they have an issue, and they're, you know, they're just going to kind of avoid him, but you do see the kids are down by his office, and when he's in the hallway, he's talking to them, when he's in the lunchroom, he's talking to them, it really goes a long way.
And he's a happy fellow.
He is, yeah, he's, no, he's, he's the kind of guy, he's kind of fits that position, kind of, it's ideal, so.
Yep, it's good, glad to hear it.
Thank you very much.
Has there been, has there been any follow-up or any future scheduled, any kind of Alice training or anything going on with the school?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, so we, we've gone through and we've had the staff trained in that, and we're going to follow up this fall with a workshop for the parents. Really kind of want to do that before we roll it out, especially at the younger levels, because obviously, we want the parents to know what's going on before we start rolling that, you know, you don't want a kid coming home and explaining, Alice and concept is a little bit of, it's common sense approach on some levels, but it's a little bit different than how we've handled those situations before. But like I said, arts, our entire staff has been trained in it right now, so they understand the concepts. In fact, we have a drill this week, it'll be the first, kind of, it's going to be a soft kind of drill because we haven't gone through this process before, but it's going to be based on Alice principles, in other words, get out when you can get out, and there's a lot of pieces to that, but we want to run it through with our staff and kind of explain to them, you know, give a mock kind of one, because later in the year, our plan is to have a full active shooter type drill, where we actually, you know, go through the whole process of evacuating, doing all those kind of things, so. But yeah, I, I think that, and again, Dave being well-versed and being a trainer for that, nice for him to always refresh the staff. And one of the things that goes overlooked, when you have a plan like that in place, you know, every day you have substitute teachers in your building, and every day you have new staff, you know, a few times throughout the year where new staff comes in, and sometimes you get going into the school year and you kind of forget, those people didn't have that training, or they might not know every procedure, and so having someone like Dave there that can go down and say, okay, this is kind of in a nutshell what we do in this situation is, it's a neat thing to have too, so just another benefit of having him around there.
It's fantastic. See, you categorize the schools being proactive at this point?
Yep, absolutely.
Terrific.
Absolutely, I would.
Music to my ears, buddy.
Very good.
Thank you.
You bet. Thanks.
Thanks for coming. Any other public comments? Got anything, Bill? No? Okay. Other public comments? Moving right along the consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting minutes of September 17th and synopsis, check reports, September Parks and Rec updates, last day to register for November election is October 9th, 2018, communication on the Scarecrow Festival, proposed address sign ordinance, and a request from Cindy Babish and our building department to attend a BSNA class on 10/9/18 at an amount of $205.
Support.
Okay, motion support, any discussion or questions on any of this?
Yeah, what's the address sign ordinance?
Well, I think what it is, we're having problems locating, especially like the fire department, on the out islands, you know, we get an address. And, am I right Cindy? And I know personally, like, I used to do it, my brother does all the, the DTE calls, we take DTE out there by boat, and it's a challenge to find them. I'm wondering if we could just get some stencils and reflective paint and paint them on their seawalls, you know, or something, but.
Better not.
Yeah, I don't know, but it is an issue that.
There's not much seawall to paint it on.
Yeah, that's true.
Did you say your GPS was not adequate enough?
Yeah, yeah, we don't, yeah, you don't get coordinates, but.
What if we added a pre, pre-coordinates and a list of those and then?
Well, we probably could do that interface too. I'd have to talk with dispatch on that, but it's a challenge to figure out, you know, what houses, where, like, we get a building permit for a, something out there, and, you know, it's, we get eighty, just 8,500 North Channel, which should be across from Deckers, but which house is it? There's no numbers.
Fluorescent signs is a snort, right?
Yeah, there's no post, they don't have post boxes out there, so, I think that's what that's about, so. Anything else? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion passes on the consent agenda. Yeah, supervisor's report. Al, I wasn't in the office a whole lot, like I mentioned before, I had knee surgery last week, and actually, today's probably the first day I don't have cobwebs running around in my head, after all the drugs they give you.
It was the shortest supervisor's report ever.
It was, but I have notes.
I see he's added on some notes to his.
I have notes, it was the shortest. Update on the water plant, as you recall, we approved to get a new air compressor, replacing one of the two, two of the ones in the plant, and actually, they shipped the wrong compressor, but we have the right compressor now, and it is being installed. The master meter that goes between the city of Algenack and all Clay Township going north, we do have that in, it did come, and we're going to be setting the date to install that, and there won't, there should not be any cutoff in water, water service there, we're going to do a workaround to keep everybody in and then install the, the new meter. And our turbidity meters have been installed and are running, and hearing, hearing to lake Erie raw water monitoring equipment has been installed and online right now. I think we're actually the first ones in the whole, in the whole region to have that done. And I know we are having some issues with one of the low, the low-service VFD pumps, and we're getting some bids to have that repaired. We have three of them, and one of them's giving us, giving us some issues, so. That's what's going on in the water plant. I'm still working on the DNR trust fund grant for the Harsons Island Nature Park kayak launch on the island. I did, we did come up with a pretty good initial score, but there's a, gotta tweak it a little bit, we can improve that score, so I'll be working on that actually tomorrow. I wanted to mention the Clay-Algenack Slow Roll is Thursday, October 4th. It's going to start, well, people are going to start congregating at 5:30 in Algenack at the park, the River Park, and it's going to leave at 6:00, and it's going to be a bike tour, it's going to be about eight miles long, and then afterwards, they, we're going to have some entertainment and some free food in the park afterwards, and I'm not sure of all the details on that. I was hoping I could do it, it's going to be tough, I don't know if I'll be on a bike in a couple days, but I, I like that kind of stuff. Just wanted to mention too, we did have to cancel our Tiny Tikes event in the park on the Sunday due to the rain, and let's see, October 8th, we're going to start on the first bridge in Anchor Bay Drive. So there's a few barricades there, that bridge is being replaced, and they're going to, it's probably going to become a one-way street until it's done, I'm not sure, I didn't, it's going to probably take about six to eight weeks to doing that, that's going to start October 8th. I'm going to tell them chief, if there is a time that they're going to close it down, to let us know so we can get a truck over there, so. And Al kind of mentioned it too, but our next meeting, we should have a vaping ordinance in front of our board, and I'll try to get it out to the board here in the next couple days so you can kind of process it and everything. Any kind of ordinances, you know, I like to take a long, hard look at it, because there's always unintended consequences and things like that. And plus, we're talking about starting a DARE program going, there's only one DARE program in the whole St. Clair County now, and that's up by Port here, and we're trying, we're getting costs, I think we could probably do it with not much investment. Like Al mentioned, there's some money's available for it, and, and there's, there's people who are willing to donate money to the programs like that to get them, get it kicked off. So we're going to be looking at that going forward. And next meeting too, I'll get these out to you soon, we have three zoning ordinance changes that came back from the county, and that will be before us next meeting also. Got lots of things in Parks and Rec going on. We have a reef class, October 4th at 7 o'clock, is that sold out or no?
No, it's still open.
Okay, we do have, and it's a scary Halloween reef, reef class, so that's kind of fun. We do have our Detroit Lions bus trip, December 2nd, and a new event, and this is going to explode into something, it's getting bigger and bigger every day, we're doing a Doggapalooza. We're having Dog Day in the park. Alright. And we got all kinds of things going on, from dog massage therapists, like Stella needs more massaging.
And counseling.
Yeah, and counseling. And people treats, dog treats, there's going to be dog trainers there, someone's going to give a little class on trimming nails, and all kinds of stuff going on, so, and we'll be having concessions. That's again, October 14th from 1 to 3, and then our third annual Scarecrow Festival, and we're, you know, this is going to be our third one, is everything, we amp it up more and more every year, and it's October 27th from 12 to 4.
I believe we're also going to try and bring in the safety tikes that we had to cancel?
Yes.
Into that as well? The Paw Patrol?
Yeah, we're going to bring the Paw Patrol that, and there's, I could go through this, there's a whole, we're going to have DJs, photo ops, face painting, scarecrow contests, make your own scarecrow, again, concessions. We have ordered a 61-foot obstacle course to run through, and I'll be running by then. Come beat my time.
Oh boy.
Oh boy. And a bunch of other stuff, so it's all fun. And if you're on Facebook, go to Clay Township Parks and Rec and like it, and there's all kinds of information on this and more, if not, give us a call, and we'll be sure to help you out. All kinds of fun stuff coming. That concludes the supervisor's report.
Hey, Artie, I have a question.
Sure.
Do we have an update on the St. John's Marsh, DNR, Ducks Unlimited?
Yeah, well, where it is, it's, you know, it's funded, we got $1.8 million, I believe it is, it's funded, 10,000 of that is committed from Clay Township. It's, there was a bill passed in the House, which I went and testified on, and now it's in the Senate, and that's going to be coming up pretty quick. And if that gets passed, it will be probably rolling this, this winter or early spring. Right now, it's held up with the DEQ, because the DEQ doesn't have leeway to basically, what they wanted to do is temporarily change a few things in the marsh, and that would allow them to do the, do the whole reconstruction, build the dikes, and so they could monitor the elevation of the, of the wire to control the frags. And it's, it really is against DEQ regulations to do this, even though it's going to be a temporary thing. You know, they want to put a temporary seawall and fill it in and then pull it back out. And, and so this bill is allowing the DEQ to be more flexible to habitat restoration projects for the DNR.
We need that bill to pass?
Yes.
Okay.
And I went and testified on that, and, and talked to their committee, and it went through unanimously. I'll give, I'll give, I'll find out when it's coming up on the Senate.
Okay.
But my analogy was, is, it's like, you know, if you got a dead arm, and if you could cut your finger off to save your arm, would you do that? And everyone's all, yeah, and not only this, the arm, the finger will grow back. I mean, that's the analogy. And so I, I don't anticipate it, you know, it being a problem to get it passed, but is there, this was the, this project was driving the bill, but I heard a lot of other things that just didn't make sense. There is a guy that had 500 acres of farmland, and he wanted to donate it to the, to the state for, to make it a habitat restoration. And he put in, being a farmland, he put in drains and tiles for it to drain, well, for habitat restoration, they would have to pull the drains, tiles out.
Yep.
That would be against DEQ. And it's like, really?
Yeah.
And they actually determined, well, we're just going to fill it with water. Well, they said water is actually fill, which, it just blew me away, so, yeah, this bill needs to get passed.
Yeah, sure does.
But thanks for asking.
There was an article in the Voice, I believe, on it.
Yeah.
It was pretty, pretty good.
Oh yeah. So. Alright, sounds good. And that concludes the supervisor's report. Next, we have Fire Chief Report. Chief Rose.
Good evening. For the month of September, I attended one meeting, which was at the St. Clair County Chiefs Association, topic was the pagers. We've been having some issues with them, but from what I've been told, that Tina is working with Digicom, and there are some resolution to getting those problems fixed, longer antenna, plus there's a new program that's coming out for the pagers, this is an update, so we won't get them to bonk out. We brought on five people last month, and hope to bring on four tonight. I also have three more applications, so we'll be looking at those here later for the month. Also like to report Donovan Hubert and Ben Conroy have enrolled into an EMT class up at TriHospital.
Awesome.
So we'll have two more people trained EMTs and fire two, they're already fire two. AFG grant opened up in September, and it closes in October, end of October. We were notified by the county that we did not get the radio grant through the county, so I've been talking with the Fire Chief at Marine City and Algenack, and also talked to Jason to see if they would like to go in on another regional grant for radios, portable radios for our, for departments, so we'll be working towards that to get those. Also, we're going to need to purchase some, some gear for our new employees, boots, helmets, gloves, to, because I don't have a bench stock of it, because number one, they have a shelf life on it, you try not to, to keep that stuff stored, because, you know, it's going to expire within 10 years or so, so you try to buy it as you need it. So I do have some turnout clothes, or pants and coat, that may fit, fit the guys, so we may not have to purchase any of that. A couple other things that I didn't have in my report that I wanted to let you guys know, we put the bids out for the Harsons Island Fire Station, we sent it out to five of the local contractors in the, in the area, and it closes on the 8th of October, so all the bids need to be back to the township by the 8th of October, so you can open them up. I also found out today that our new air packs will be delivered Wednesday, a lot sooner than what we anticipated, so those will come in Wednesday. And also, I've been in contact with TriHospital EMS about doing a first aid class and a CPR class for on-the-island residents, so I need to get that out to the residents to see who would be interested in attending a course.
Do we have dates yet or no?
Once we get it, you know, if we find out if it, if there is an interest on the island, then I'll set up some dates for them, and they'll come in and teach first aid and a CPR class to them.
So our EMTs are qualified to teach CPR and first aid as a certified?
Well, what's going to happen, TriHospital's going to come in and teach the class for us.
Oh, TriHospital's going to, okay.
And it's not going to be at any cost to, to the residents, it's, it's a free class.
Perfect.
We do have, we do have instructors in our department though, I have four instructors.
Yeah, that was my point, so, okay, thanks.
We're getting the quotes too, aren't we, on the ventilation systems?
I, yes, I just got one from Hastings, so I'll have to give that to you folks to, to review. And then there was another company that came in, he's, has not turned in his quote yet, I should get it sometime this week for your review.
Go ahead. Any questions for Chief?
Good job.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Okay, unfinished business, we have the update on the Downriver Fire Rens Association, there's not a whole lot to really report on that, we, you know, we did send them a letter that requiring them to, you know, we need to have that, the books, so we, our auditors can review them, and I know the head of the association called, called our attorney up Friday and said that he would be turning them over, and they're facilitating how to do that, and we did actually find some, some of the records also. I think from 2011 to 15 or something like that, and we turned them over to, to the auditors for, to review. We'll be getting, I'm going to ask them for a quote on how much it will cost to review that for us to approve, because there will be expenditure, so we'll see if the board wants to go ahead with that. So it's, it's, it's going, going forward, so. That's about all I have on that right now. So, it's, it's, it's going, going forward, so that's about all I have on that right now. New business. First thing, Halloween hours, Wednesday, October 31st, 2017, 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
I'll make a motion to approve the Halloween hours for Wednesday, October 31st, 2017, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Support.
2018.
2018, sorry.
Yeah.
I was sick over there, I'm just reading the paper.
Copy and paste.
Is Wednesday on that day or is it Thursday?
Let's hope it's Wednesday.
What day is it?
It's Wednesday.
It is Wednesday.
Oh, thank goodness.
We have motion?
Support.
I did have one email from a resident thinking that we should move Halloween to the nearest Saturday, but.
Can't do that. I would love to, but the kids are still gonna go out on Halloween, Halloween's Halloween.
Yeah, and scary, there's everything else and, and, yeah.
Give them an extra day.
I don't, I didn't think that would work, I, I, yeah, I agree. And I think Halloween only goes to seven, but seven's too early.
Do they start theirs any earlier?
No.
No, they start at 5:00?
Yeah.
I'm gonna be honest with you, the kids go out when the kids go out. We set our hours, they set our hours, the little ones are out at 4:30.
It truly doesn't, we don't really interfere with that.
Yeah, someone's gonna say, okay.
I'm not sure why we set them every year, but we do.
We do.
Okay.
Okay, I think that's enough discussion, don't you?
And the island does its own thing, so.
Yeah. All right, so the motion is Halloween, October 31st, 5:00 to 8:00. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion carries. Next, we have a Parks and Rec request for a Lion's, a Lion's Bus Trip approval to pay for tickets for $3,295, and we'll be getting this money back from people signing up for our bus trip.
Does this include any alcohol or Kleenex for the ride home?
Well, this is, this is our, this is our cost, this is our cost to get the tickets. Oh, what's the cost, is it $40? How much is the?
$71.
$71 per person, so.
That's a good deal.
Yeah, we did this last year, it sells out quick and.
That's actually just ticket prices, but it includes a bus trip.
Right, the bus was sponsored by Seaway RV and Trailer.
Right, so we got a sponsor for the bus.
Seaway RV and Trailer Park, are they, the ones right here?
And we throw in some food down there.
Very cool.
It's a, it's a good event, actually.
Great, well, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Supervisor, that we approve the Parks and Recs Lion's Bus Trip for any amount of $3,295.
Support.
Motion support, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, motion carries. Okay, next, we have to, we don't have to, but it's up to the board to accept a donation to the fire department for $100, I think they did a little burn job, and they donated $100 to our association, or not the association, but our fire department.
I'll make that motion to accept the $100 donation for the burning of a, of a pile of brush.
Stuff.
Stuff.
Support. Motion support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, next, fire department, we have some new hires, you wanna come on up, Chief? We're gonna do these one at a time?
Yeah, why don't you, why don't you bring them up one at a time, Chief?
Okay.
Get to know them.
We can grill them.
Put them on the hot seat.
Put them on the hot seat.
At, all right, yeah. At this time, I'd like to recommend hiring the following personnel, David N. Welsh.
Uh-oh, is that you?
Your first call.
Is that you?
They got it.
Okay.
David lives in Algenack, he has firefighter one, firefighter two, and he's presently in an EMT class.
Awesome.
Wow, that's great. That's great.
You live in Algenack, David?
Yes, sir.
Great.
Were you on the Algenack Fire Department at all, or?
No.
No. And where'd you get your fire one and two at?
Macomb Community College.
Okay, recent grad, or?
Yeah, just this last spring.
All right, great, welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
All right, any questions for David?
Why here, why do you wanna play here?
I wanna be a firefighter in Clay Township, because that's where my family is, that's where my son's gonna grow up.
Good answer.
Very good.
Hopefully you get to work with one of the best chiefs in Michigan.
I'll entertain a motion to hire David.
Make a motion that we hire David Welch with the Clay Township Fire Department?
Support.
Motion support, any more discussion? Hearing none, signify by, hearing none.
All in favor?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, David.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Next one is Nathan Townsend, he lives in Armada, he has firefighter one, firefighter two, and he also has AMTs basic.
Hi, Nathan.
Hello.
Were you a firefighter up in Armada?
No, I'm employed with Ray Township Fire right now.
Oh, okay, great, and you'll probably be doing some duty shifts, right, for us?
Yes, sir.
Awesome.
I also work at Tri Hospital EMS.
Oh.
My regular station.
Down here?
Yeah, I'm pretty familiar with it.
All right.
Okay, so you, so you know the guys.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Welcome, welcome.
How long have you been a firefighter?
Just a year.
A year?
I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to hire Nathan Townsend, Clay Township Fire Department?
Support.
Motion of support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Congratulations, Nathan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one is Joseph Marso, he lives in St. Clair Shores, he also has firefighter one, firefighter two, and basic EMT.
Hello.
So, so I guess the same question, what was your, what's your background?
Worked EMS for 11 years, firefighter for five, graduated on honors from Wayne Community College District, lived in St. Clair Shores, certified in pediatric emergencies and
Wow.
Emergency vehicle operator instructor.
Good. All right, perfect.
And you'll probably be doing some duty shifts for us also, right?
Correct, sir.
Very good, thank you.
Make a motion to hire Joseph Maroso?
Ah, Marasu.
Ah, Maraso, Clay Township Fire Department?
Support.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, congratulations. And, go ahead.
And the last one is Christopher Carr, lives in Ray Township, firefighter one and two, and also a basic EMT.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you, sir?
Really good.
Mr. Carr? You go by Chris or Christopher?
Chris.
Chris?
Chris.
So, it looks like you got quite a bit of qualification, too.
I've been around a little bit, I started when I was 18 and been doing it ever since, and I'm 41.
Wow, okay, that's perfect.
Great, you got one, two.
I worked for the Crystal River Fire Department and Richmond Lennox EMS, and then I volunteer a little bit at Ray Fire.
Awesome, you'd be doing some duty shifts for us, too?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Perfect, any more questions for Chris?
Mr. Carr, what was your most outlandish event that you attended?
Oh, boy.
While on duty? Make it, make it brief.
I don't think you can.
Stop me at my friend's party in an ambulance. No, no consumption of adult beverages, though.
Did you have to load any money in it?
Thank goodness, no. I kinda wondered about that.
Okay, thank you.
Too bad.
Make a motion to hire Christopher Carr, Clay Township Fire Department?
Support.
Yeah, motion support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, congratulations. Want to swear, man?
Yeah, you wanna, you guys wanna come back up to the podium and I'll swear again?
We're gonna swear at you. Dave, is that your wife or girlfriend, or?
That's my wife.
Oh, what's your name?
My name is Nikki.
Hey, Nikki, how you doing? Good, we should've brought you up here, too.
Swear her in as well.
In the state of Michigan, County of St. Clair, I raise your right hand, do solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of this state, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of Clay Township firefighter and in for the Township of Clay, County of St. Clair, State of Michigan, according to the best of your abilities, so long here.
Okay.
You guys will each pick a line, it's the last four.
Don't we have to stick them and get some blood, too?
Don't, don't sit down yet, I wanna get a picture from you before you guys, or we can do it, should have it with your hands raised, but I couldn't get my camera turned on and. Actually, I didn't know how, so.
At least it's not a Polaroid, Mark.
Yeah. Instamatic.
The flash cubes.
Oh, darn it, there's none left.
I'll use my flip top.
He had to look at them to see if they were burned out or not.
I remember that. Chief, you're on a roll right now.
Yeah.
Nice job.
Thanks.
Good job, absolutely.
It's, it's what the township needs right now.
Take two, always take two.
Okay, good, thank you, guys.
Thanks a lot, guys. Congratulations. All right, moving right along, we have three resolutions for our two different special assessments. First is Resolution 2018-44, Special Assessment Aquatic Management Canal Cleaning Resolution Number Two for Bayview Shores, Dyke Road, Phillips Drive, as to prepare the tax roll for that special assessment.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Resolution Number Two, 2018-44, Special Assessment Resolution Number Two, Aquatic Management Canal Cleaning, canals between Bayview Shores Drive, Dyke Road, Phillips Drive, Special Assessment District Clay Township.
Okay, and as to prepare the
To prepare the
Tax rolls, it basically is ordering a supervisor, assessing officer, to prepare the special assessment roll for the project.
Support.
Yeah, motion of support, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, vote.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next on the same project is Resolution 2018-45, Special Assessment, I'm just gonna make this a motion. I'll move that we pass Resolution 2018-45, Special Assessment Aquatic Management Canal Cleaning Resolution Number Three for Bayview Shores, Dyke Road, Phillips Drive, to set a public hearing, hearing number two, for November 5th, 2018.
Support.
Yeah, motion of support, any discussion? Hearing none, all, oh, roll call.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Next, I'll just make this a motion, a motion to approve Resolution 2018-46, Special Assessment Aquatic Management Canal Cleaning Resolution Number Four for Anchor Bay Drive, Farnsworth Drive, and Phillips Drive to set the tax roll.
Support.
We have motion of support, and basically the tax roll on this is going to be, the project is our five years, 15,200, it's gonna be spread out equally, five years, so it'll be $3,040 per year, and it's going to cost $1.13 per foot on the parcels.
I have a question. On, on here, here on this resolution, it says now, therefore be it resolved, and that the special assessment role shall be designated Private Road, Lazy Lane, Harson's Island.
Or does it say that?
That was, it was a copy and paste on Sheri's part. I did catch it, but she was out of the, I didn't put the board packet together till Thursday evening, she said she was going to redo it this morning, but she was gone at class today, so.
Okay, we need to
We'll fix that.
Need to fix that, yes.
That will be deleted.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought happened, but I wanted to bring it to everybody's attention.
So, amended motion, last number one.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
I forgot about that, I noticed that when I was putting it together and called her.
Good eyes, Joanne, good eyes.
That, okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call, vote, please.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes. Okay, that's all we have on our new business board member comment, Cindy?
I got to go down Marsh Road, they just repaved it.
Yep.
It's absolutely fabulous, it's almost like a little racetrack, and I noticed that they got Swartout done as well, so that looks fabulous as well.
And soon to follow will be St. John's.
Okay, and we doing Starville next year?
Yes.
Okay. Other than that, I would like to say congratulations and welcome to our new firefighters. Hope you guys, I hope you guys enjoy your new positions here in Clay Township.
Mark, how you, how are we doing down there?
I'm good, I like to comment, fire department, great job, new hires and everything else that you're working on, planning commission update, we had a public hearing on the school house grill, accessory dwelling, we approved the application for that, so that's in the process. The Crystal Inn modification for reoccupancy, that's going to be a catering establishment, which is great, and you'd be able to get food to go over there on the way home from work, of course, I live not too far from there anyway, so I'll leave my dinner. And a few other things, so, thank you.
Thank you, Joanne?
We had a ZBA meeting this past week and a couple weeks ago, and one, one of the public hearings was on the island, for the island, a property on the island, which we denied, and then the other one, which was on the mainland, we okayed. That's it, and welcome to your new firefighters. Yeah, glad, glad to have you.
Christopher?
Yeah, thanks to Al, Lieutenant, for coming in and giving us an update on that. That's, I enjoy that kind of stuff, I think we can maybe talk him into making a regular appearance here, maybe once a quarter or something.
Oh, that'd be nice.
We should, we should probably get an update on the schools, maybe towards the end of the year, I know they're gonna start handing out some of that, that budgetary money, and I know roofs are on the top of their priority list, but looking forward, I think it's a 10-year bond, right?
Plan on doing the roofs in the spring, once, it's hard to do it this year, this time.
Yep, so that'll be a good resource for us and also to keep the community informed. Yeah, Cindy's right, the paving projects look good. For some strange reason in my mind, I thought that, that the paving would've continued through the awkward corner there, and it stopped short of that, so maybe that, is that a border issue?
I don't know, I haven't drove it yet.
I'm hoping that it'll get done when Starville gets done, and that's why I'm assuming they stopped there.
We're gonna do Starville next year.
Okay. So, it was a little, just a little surprise.
I, I know there's a turn or a triangle that
Yes, that's a crazy little intersection.
We'll, we'll pick up the slack on that when we do Starville.
Fantastic, that's all I have.
Okay, and yeah, and St. John's should be starting here real quick.
I did notice Phelps is starting to look a little rough.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do Phelps Fruit and Starville, or on the, on the bucket list, so. Chrissy?
This Saturday, October 6th, is the annual Pink Out Game at the high school, Pink Out Games, for Algenack. communities, if I'm counting right in my head. So, the games start at 9:00. If you can make it there to support cancer research, that would be great.
That's an awesome event. Gosh, so much.
Yeah, it's nonstop football, four fields.
Yeah.
All day long.
All day.
Can't, you walk in, you're not gonna miss a game, so.
Right. You know what? This time of year, the deer really start to move, so be careful driving. Watch out for those buggers. They jump out on you. I'm just, you know what, I'm gonna get a little sappy, but there's just so much positive stuff going on in our community. I have a meeting tomorrow night with a group of people, seeing whether we can keep it going,